Wonderful. I can't see far anymore, don't you know? So, our boys are... You guys are so safe. What grade are you in? I'm sorry, you gotta pay. That way, in this place.
Mike check one, two, testing, okay. Testing one, two. So what I wanna do is I wanna leave it down here. Test one, two. Testing one, two. Testing one, two. Test one, two. Mike check, one, two. Testing one, two. How high are you? Testing one, two. Test one, two. You're just in her shower.
Well, I have to go see the person that I'm coming from. I have to go by the mean. Just a person. Great to see you guys. How are you?
Good, how about you?
Testing one, two.
You were just in her shower. Um, well, yeah. You guys are so safe. What grade are you in? I'm sorry, you gotta pay. 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 Great to see you guys. How are you? How are you? How are you? Oh, I just think I have something on video. I, I, I just... So where is she? Where is she? No, 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 no. Why are you here?
Good, I'm glad to be going. And by the way, and then I got the letter. He's just invited by our... Like, and where you... So we got a question like... Yeah, this is like... What is it? Why are you here? How are you? Good, I'm glad to be going. And by the way, and then I got the letter. He's just invited by our... Like, and where you... So we got a question like... Yeah, this is like... What is it? How good are you? Oh, it's been here. My man, like, it's like... Like, just great. Oh, by the way. Like, some of my kids are like, "Rid of a visitor." And last night, I'm like, "No, I'm not." I almost danced out. In my vision, like, you can hear them. There he is. I'm like, "What's wrong?" "What is a mountain?" I'm like, "Somebody." So he goes, "Get down." I'm like, "No." Why didn't you know that? Young guy, he said, "Call me." And Alex, he helped me. He helped me. Far as I can tell. They got me. She was studying. 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 My, my brother is red. I didn't see it. Come on, that's the best thing. That's the deal. I don't know where he's going. I don't know. 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 I don't know.
...
Him? He's awesome. Alright. Hi, how are you? Can I get a hug? Okay. Oh, that works, that thing works. Good evening, everyone. This is a reg- a regular meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on Friday, June 7th, 2019. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. We want to welcome everyone present here at Donald Stewart Early Childhood Center School Number 51, and to our television viewers to this June 13th, 2019, meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We also ask that you silence the sound on your electronic devices, since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. We may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you to your- for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion may sign up to the start of the meeting so that they have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states name, address, telephone number, and the reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or general education item. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Here.
Bathalas. Carvalho. Chevres.
Here.
Hernandez. Jacobs.
Present.
Marina Ortega. Neron. Pastana.
Present. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The presentation of colors will be done by Admiral William F. Hawsey, Junior Health and Public Safety Academy, JR OTC Color Guard. Please present your colors.
Cover, hop, left, face. Ready, cut. Carry, colors. Ready, cut. Forward, march. Cover, hop. Order. Colors. Ready, cut. Right, face. Ready, cut. Carry, colors. Ready, cut. Present, colors.
Board Member Carvalho, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars throw the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we walked Were so gallantly streaming? And rocket red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you to our JR OTC Color Guard. A big round of applause, please.
Carry, colors. Ready, cut. Order. Colors. Ready, cut. Right. Face. Ready, cut. Carry, colors. Ready, cut. Forward, march. Cover, hop. Order. Colors. Ready, hop. Left. Face. Ready, cut. Cover, case. Miss.
Board Member Jacobs, please lead us in the Pledge of Ethics.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to: Understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you. You may all be seated. At this time, we will be previewing our President's Tour video. Do we like butterflies?
Yeah.
Yes, are they nice and colorful?
Yeah.
I saw- I saw a big airplane flying in the sky.
You did? I know, I hear them every single day too, right?
Because they're going on vacation.
They're going off vacation?
Most of them on vacation. Me too.
I go on vacation. I want my mom to see me.
What will happen to me next, do you know? So what happens after the caterpillar?
A butterfly.
Right, right, so then they- it goes in a rotation, right? So a caterpillar then goes into a cocoon, which is what you had said, right? Who said that they go into a cocoon? And then, after that, they shed and they become?
A butterfly.
Absolutely, and then when they lay eggs, it keeps going round and round, same thing.
So we can get better at learning.
Very good, so we love our teachers, right? Do we show them that every single day?
Yeah.
Okay, if we don't, we're gonna start showing them that we love them, right? That we thank them every single day for all that they do, right? Very good, high five. Good answer.
Welcome to school study, all of the Tigers, hurrah!
So happy that you're learning everything that you need to know, and we're happy that you love your teachers and your principals, and we are always here to help you, whatever you may need, so that you can be happy every single day, right?
Yeah.
And we care so, so much about you. You know that?
Yes.
Yes? Oh, thank you!
Happy Halloween, if you feel the groove with tiger root. Because our happy Halloween is you too, and happy gift is the truth.
We have amazing, amazing high schools that we have to offer you all, and I really hope that you guys start, you know, going and knocking on your guidance counselor's doors, because each and every one of them have something really good to offer. And that just goes into being a long-term goal and finding out where you guys wanna end up 10 years from now. So what's in here? Board Members, what's in here?
Water and glue.
Water and glue, good job. Wanna see it too? Come here. It looks like milk. By a show of hands, do we all like our school?
Yeah.
What's our favorite thing to do at school? Who wants to share? You like to play? You like everything, huh?
I- I like paint.
You like to paint?
I like- I like paint and glue.
Okay, what else? What do you like most about- everything. How's everyone doing? Are you guys having an awesome day at school today?
Yes.
Yes, who wants to tell me what they're doing here with all the straws? Go ahead.
Flourishes and polygons.
Okay.
And polygons have square sides and useful corners.
Very good. Well, all that I ask of you guys is have fun and stay safe this summer, but most importantly, I'm going to ask you to not forget about your school, right? And not to just not open up a textbook throughout the whole summer, because as long as you keep on studying and reading and everything, it just makes you more prepared for 4th grade next year, right? And 4th grade is a big deal, right? Are we excited to go to 4th grade?
Yeah.
Yeah? Let me say you guys are like halfway through and then, you know, in the next four years, you guys are gonna be gone from the school. And at this time, we actually have another short video that we are going to play before our Student Excellence, which is part of our presentations for the evening. Thank you. At this time, I ask for my Board colleagues to please join me up here so that we can start with our presentations. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, once again. As I have mentioned at previous meetings, I have been visiting our district schools as part of the President's Tour to meet the members of our learning communities and witness the great work they are doing in their classrooms. I was fortunate enough to meet our Student Excellence honorees for this evening during the visits I have made so far this year. While visiting each school, I wanted to have the opportunity to recognize a student for their unique contributions to their school. The students being honored were selected by their principal for being one of a kind in such characteristics as going above and beyond, helping others, being a positive role model, performing at a high level, or making an impactful contribution to their learning community. There was a brief video that we had presented of these exceptional students who have been recognized as Stephanie Stars. Please join me in applauding the outstanding efforts of these students in their respective learning communities. Please come forward as your name is called. Alice Paris, School Number 1. Frandellis Garcia, School Number 2. Annie Chimbolo Fernandez, School Number 3. Maria Guadazaca, School Number 4. Kaseen Bracy, School Number 5. Camila Konza, School Number 6. Justin Harris, School Number 7. Alexandra Kuhn, School Number 8. Edward Tejeda, School Number 9. Ethan Molo Lopez, School Number 12. Joshua Pagan, School Number 13. Gina Lys, The Jesus, School Number 14. Catherine Gomez, School Number 15. Sienna Maria de Palma, School Number 16. Cynthia Boike, School Number 18. Matthew Canonis, School Number 19. Samaya Lezier, School Number 20. Ariana Garcia, School Number 21. Gerald Pineda, School Number 51. And Juliana Brito, School Number 52. Come on, little ones. Ladies and gentlemen, can we please have a big round of applause for each and every one of our amazing students? And as the year continues, when we start back up in September, we will certainly continue these tours and we will adjourn our year with the remainder of the schools that have not been toured yet. So once again, thank you to our administrators, to our teachers, to our parents. You are all the reason why they are standing up here with us today. Thank you. Congratulations. Good to see you guys again. Hi, ladies. High five? High five? Come on, congratulations. Congratulations. Here. Our next... Good evening, everybody. How beautiful. Our next Community Excellence Honorees are the members of the Elizabeth Bilingual Education Parent Advisory Committee, or BPAC. BPAC consists of various stakeholders in Elizabeth Public Schools. Bilingual ESL community. Committee members are composed of parents, teachers, guidance counselors, administrators, and community members. The purpose of BPAC is to discuss the various aspects of supporting the academic and social emotional needs of English-language learners and their families. The BPAC Committee meets four times per year, during which they have planned workshops about internet safety, power school access, assessments, benchmarks, transitioning from 8th grade to high school, available community resources, and most recently, the benefits of bilingual ESL education and using the updated bilingual ESL website as a resource. These workshops are intended to educate the parents of Elizabeth students in their native language. Please join me in applauding the tremendous efforts of the members of the BPAC Committee that have shown great determination and commitment to support Elizabeth language learners and ensure that every child achieves excellence. Please come forward as your name is called. Ms. Cabrera, Elizabeth Public Schools Bilingual Psychologist and BPAC Coordinator. Dr. Risco, Community Partner from Kane University. Ms. Perez, Parent of Children in the Bilingual Program. Ms. Amin, ESL Teacher. Ms. Marie Sajjo, Haitian Creole Bilingual Teacher. Ms. Jessica Villa Real, Bilingual Social Studies Teacher and a parent of children in the bilingual program. Ms. Maricel Mueller, Guidance Counselor and a parent of children in the bilingual program. Ms. Rebecca Oriolana, Bilingual and ESL Supervisor. Ms. Iliana Mena, World Language Supervisor. And closing it all off, our Director, Ms. Sandra Nunez, Director of Bilingual and ESL Education. Big round of applause for our BPAC. Good evening, everyone. Our next Community Excellence Honorees are the members of the Elizabeth Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, or ECIPAC. CPAC is a parent committee which met monthly this year with parents of special needs students. They brought many workshops to our district, from bullying to how to advocate for your child. They have made a great contribution in bringing information to our families of students with special needs. The CPAC Executive Committee has also donated their time at various district events and activities, such as Field Day and ice skating. Please join me in applauding, very, very close to my heart, the outstanding efforts of the members of the Elizabeth CPAC Executive Committee that have shown great passion and dedication this year to help our students with special needs and their families, as well as in ensuring that every child achieves excellence. Please come forward as your name is called. These are our CPAC Committee Members 2018-2019. Michelle Santos, our President of ECIPAC. Mariva Akuri, our Vice President. Lianna Villa Vicencio, our Secretary. Mary Luz Maldonado, our Communications Outreach Officer. Anna Bermeo, our Communication Outreach Officer. And Maria Ishavaria, Policy and Programming Officer. Our ECIPAC Committee, ladies and gentlemen. And we continue with Stars of Excellence. Our next Star of Excellence for this evening is a great, great inspiration, not only to our learning community, but to everyone who aspires to be young at heart. For the past 18 years, our Honoree has served as a custodian for the Elizabeth Public Schools currently working at the High School Welcome Center. After 18 years of dedicated service, he has decided to retire. But the remarkable part of this story is that he is a beautiful, 88-years-young. He is a shining example of endurance and the human spirit who has not allowed age to stand in his way of demonstrating tremendous commitment to his work over the years. Please join me in applauding the excellent efforts of custodian Ismael Rosado during his years of dedication service to the Elizabeth Public Schools. Mr. Rosado, please, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone! All right, thank you. For our last Community Excellence Award for the evening, we would like to invite the Rotary Club of Elizabeth to make their Educator of the Year presentation. For decades, Elizabeth Public Schools has been the recipient of the vast generosity of the Rotary Club of Elizabeth and its members. Their dictionary project has provided 3rd grade students with dictionaries with the goal of assisting them in becoming good writers, active readers, creative thinkers, and resourceful learners. The Rotary Club also has supported hundreds of our students in achieving their dreams of attending college through the establishment of the Davis Scholarship Fund, which has awarded 608,000 to 383 students since 1986. Let's applaud the Rotary Club of Elizabeth for more than 100 years of admirable contributions to the greater Elizabeth community. Will the representative of the Rotary Club of Elizabeth please come forward? Marcia Henkel, the Rotary Club of Elizabeth Educator of the Year 2019. 31 years of passion, commitment, and unconditional love for the children of Elizabeth, and an educator with a heart of gold, presented this day by the Rotary Club of Elizabeth. Marcia, we'll do it again.
Thank you so much.
And for our last presentation for the evening. As part of the district's core beliefs, Elizabeth Public Schools believes that parents and caregivers are both valued partners and active participants in their children's learning. To start our Community Excellence Awards, we would like to recognize parents who have played an active role in the learning and academic success of Elizabeth Public Schools' children. We have a brief bio to introduce each Honoree. Please join me in applauding their commitment to education and for serving as important partners to their respective school communities.
We'd like to begin with Saluhin Rahim from George Washington Academy of Science and Engineering, School Number One. Mr. Rahim is an Essex County Corrections Officer and the proud parent of three students at George Washington Academy, Jordan Francis, Irene Rahim, and Kari Rahim. Mr. Rahim regularly supports School Number One initiatives and volunteers to attend school dances, Fun Day, Scholar Breakfast, as well as provides valuable feedback during stakeholder meetings. Mr. Rahim is an exemplary parent and appreciated member of the School One community who always avails himself to George Washington Academy.
Michelle Cornell, Winfield Scott School Number Two, the PTO President of Winfield Scott School Number Two, Ms. Michelle Cornell. She was born in New Jersey but was raised in the Dominican Republic. While being a full-time mom, she has always maintained her passion to serve others. During this year, the PTO has hosted many fun and interesting events for school activities and fundraisers. She's been active in planning and creating several PTO events over the year, including St. Patrick's Bake Sale, Halloween Celebration, and Thanksgiving Food Drive. For the first time at School Two, parents participated at the Christmas concert. The PTO also proudly celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week, where they honored our schools' hard-working, dedicated teachers. She looks forward to bringing new, fresh, and creative ideas to School Number Two as a PTO parent.
Hector Porto, Nicholas S. La Court, Peterstown School Number Three. The PTO President for Nicholas S. La Court, Peterstown School Number Three, is Mr. Hector Porto. Mr. Porto has two children in the Elizabeth Public Schools, born in Argentina. He and his family immigrated to Elizabeth, New Jersey when he was ten years old. He has since resided in the Peterstown section of Elizabeth. Mr. Porto attended Elizabeth Public Schools and is a proud graduate of Elizabeth High School. He's currently an Assistant Analyst for Elizabeth Public Schools, and he's proud to serve as the School Number Three PTO President. Mr. Porto also volunteers his time to attend and present at parent workshops. He assists at school family functions, he works with school leadership, he also utilizes his expertise and technology to better inform parents and is a true asset to School Number Three.
Marjorie Delgado, Joseph Batten School Number Four. The Honoree for Joseph Batten School Number Four is Ms. Marjorie Delgado. Ms. Delgado is a very loving and nurturing mother whose experience and knowledge of apraxia has helped educate the School Four community about the speech disorder. Her love and compassion for her daughter and the children of School Number Four has become infectious and has been a welcome addition to the positive school climate that has been developed within the learning community. We congratulate Ms. Delgado.
Erica Williams, Mabel G. Homeschool Number Five. Ms. Erica Williams, the current PTO President for Mabel G. Homeschool Number Five, has been an active participant in the PTO for several years. She has dedicated much of her time to school activities. She has two children at School Five and is always willing to lend a helping hand. She makes it a priority, part of the school community.
Alafelia Williams from Toussaint Lovateur, Marquise de Lafayette School Number Six. Mrs. Williams is a stay-at-home mom with two children. Her son Eli George is a kindergarten student at School Number Six. She also has a beautiful five-month-old baby that is with her this evening. Mrs. Williams immigrated to the United States from Jamaica when she was eleven years old. She moved to Elizabeth eight years ago and has been an active member of the community. She attended John J. College for Criminal Justice. One of Mrs. Williams' biggest goals is to get more parents involved in school events and activities.
Suzette Negron, Terrance C. Riley School Number Seven. Mrs. Negron, the current PTO President for Terrance C. Riley School Number Seven, has played an integral role initiating fundraising activities for student events, aiding and supporting philanthropic pursuits of our student body, and is always an active participant as a parent chaperone on field trips and events. Her dedication to School Seven is unparalleled, and the school community is thankful for her commitment and service.
Sandra Cordovi, I-Prep Academy School Number Eight. The PTO President for I-Prep Academy School Number Eight is Mrs. Cordovi. She has been a tremendous asset for the School Eight community in her first year as PTO President. She's worked collaboratively with school administration and teachers in organizing several fundraising events so students can be provided some extra amenities normally they would not have. They include a laser light show assembly and end-of-the-year eighth-grade breakfast, where students could have their yearbook signed by their friends and teachers, and refreshments for the kindergarten moving up ceremony.
Maileen Pasmino, Jerome Dunn Academy, Mathematics, Technology, and the Arts School Number Nine. As a PTO member, Ms. Pasmino coordinates every meeting, highlighting during the meetings current school trends, activities, and achievements. Her main objective is to solidify the importance of homeschool connection. At every meeting, she includes a session for questions and recommendations, ensuring that every member has a voice. Prior to being the President, Ms. Pasmino served as the Secretary and Advisor of the PTO.
Mayda Ackerman, Elmorea School Number Twelve. Ms. Ackerman, the PTO President of Elmorea School Twelve, is a stay-at-home mom of two beautiful girls, Maya, who's a sixth-grade student at Elmorea, and Amy, who will be entering preschool beginning September. In her first year as PTO President, Ms. Ackerman has been present at every meeting encouraging parents to volunteer and help our school community. She volunteers her time to school events, as well as helping with fundraisers. Mrs. Ackerman has helped raise money for various organizations, and at School Twelve, they know that she is always just a phone call away.
Carolyn Salterelli, Benjamin Franklin School Number Thirteen. PTO President, Ms. Salterelli was born and raised in Elizabeth. She spent her elementary years in Elizabeth Public Schools. She moved to Manalapan to attend high school before going off to college to study both theater and education. After college, she knew she wanted to come back to Elizabeth, the place where she had many great educational experiences, and she's been teaching in Elizabeth for nineteen years. She believes that parents are the key to child's learning experience, therefore involved with the PTO.
Donna McDonald, Abraham Lincoln School Number Fourteen. Ms. McDonald, not only is the PTO President for Abraham Lincoln School Number Fourteen, but also is a first-grade teacher at School Fourteen. Ms. McDonald has three daughters, one who is a third-grade teacher at William F. Halloran School Number Twenty-two, another who's a music therapist, and her youngest, who is in seventh grade. Ms. McDonald's dedication and love to School Number Fourteen can be seen on a daily basis. This year, she has helped coordinate Applebee's Flapjack Breakfast, the Fall Festival, Pictures with Santa, canned food drive, and a new sock drive for the homeless, Family Fun Night, and the list goes on. School Fourteen is very lucky to have her leadership and involvement.
Martha Sedeño, Christopher Columbus School Number Fifteen. Mrs. Sedeño is the School Fifteen PTO President. She's an active parent and faculty member who is tirelessly gives of herself to plan and implement activities to involve parents at School Fifteen. In addition to being our PTO President, Ms. Sedeño has previously served as School Number Fifteen School Community as a substitute bilingual and ESL teacher, and is the school's Grade Five ABL teacher. Ms. Sedeño has served Christopher Columbus PTO as President for the past three years.
Andrea Rios Cardona, Madison Monroe School Number Sixteen. Ms. Cardona is the parent of a daughter who attends first grade at School Sixteen. She's been key in helping recruit volunteers for our school and has developed strong working relationships with parents and members of the school community. She has played an important role, including annual gala dance, Fun Day, Movie Night, Fitness Night. She's truly a champion for School Number Sixteen.
Alex and Dina Echevarria, Robert Morris School Number Eighteen. Since 2006, co-presidents, Alex and Dina Echevarria have been a staple at Robert Morris School Eighteen. They've been advocates for their three children and for all the students who have attended the school during that time. They've helped organize events for students and families, work with administration, while acting as the voice of School Eighteen parents. They're active in the Improvement Panel, Safety Committee, and volunteer for almost every single school event. So we're very fortunate to have both Mr. and Mrs. Echevarria so involved in our schools.
Clemencia Mateos Woodrow Wilson School Number Nineteen. Woodrow Wilson has been fortunate to have Ms. Mateos volunteer as PTO President. Her joyful energy has brought many wonderful events to the school at which students, teachers, and families have had fun and created cherished memories. She has greeted students every day with her warm smile and has assisted with every endeavor at School Nineteen. She's recruited many wonderful parents to volunteer at different events and has brought community leaders to contribute, celebrate, and be part of the family.
Shakamaya Norville from John Marshall School Number Twenty. Our Vice President, Mrs. Norville, dedicated her time and support to School Twenty learning community during the eighteen-nineteen school year. During last summer, she spent time assisting the school administration with planning the events, activities, and fundraising for the current school year. She's participated in Back to School Night, interacted with students and parents.
Holly Sepulveda Victor Maravla School Number Twenty-One. Our PTA President, Mrs. Sepulveda began this year as the school's PTA Vice President in September and quickly stepped into the President's position without hesitation. She has given of her time generously to ensure a successful year of events and activities for our children at School Twenty-One. She's looking forward to continuing her active role.
Jennifer Perez, William F. Halloran School Number Twenty-two. Mrs. Perez, Officer Perez, a parent at William F. Halloran School Number Twenty-two, is a dedicated mom to her eleven-year-old daughter, as well as a prominent member of the Elizabeth community. She's worked for the city of Elizabeth for the past twenty-one years as an Elizabeth police officer and has served as Law Enforcement Against Drugs Officer or Lead Officer for the past seven years. She enjoys volunteering her time and giving back. She says these events give us parents a chance to get to know each other and who our children are involved with. It's very fun for the children to partake in these events.
Loretta Stevens, Nicholas Murray Butler School Number Twenty-three. Our PTO President, Mrs. Stevens, has had an interest in educating and empowering young people to stay in school and further their education, and has dedicated much of her life working in education. Three of her older children have graduated from Elizabeth Public Schools and continue to higher education, while her three younger children are presently at School Twenty-three. In this position, her aim is to coordinate events that will bring school and community together in a collaborative manner.
Mrs. Elda Kamada, School Number Twenty-five. The current PTO President is the parent of two Elizabeth Public Schools students. She's been very involved in School Twenty-five for the past seven years, and her daughter Mariana has attended the school. Mrs. Kamada is an active participant in the school's safety and climate committees and has assisted with a variety of activities at the school.
Rosanna Olivera, Dr. Orlando Herrera Academy School Number Twenty-six. Mrs. Olivera could not join us this evening, but we would like to recognize her contribution to the school as an incredibly dedicated parent.
Diana Garcia, Dr. Antonia Pantoja School Number Twenty-seven. Mrs. Garcia, as the PTO President, due to her dedication and commitment, School Twenty-seven community is strong and united. Parents, teachers, students, and community members are able to enjoy time together for the purpose of affording students authentic learning experiences inside and outside the school.
Crystal Paz, Juan Pablo Duarte, Jose Julian Martí School Number Twenty-eight. Mrs. Paz, the PTO President, has dedicated her time to the school's students, teachers, and parents and staff. She's helped accomplish the goal of making sure that teachers and parents work together for the well-being of the school's children. She's a mother of four and a mother figure to all of School Number Twenty-eight students, treating each and every one of them with love and respect.
Sandra Cordovi, who we recognized earlier, is currently the PTO President at Dr. Albert Einstein School Number Twenty-nine. Through her various fundraisers, she's helped fund numerous class trips, assemblies, red carpet events, teacher appreciation activities. In her free time, she loves spending time with her family, and we thank her for her commitment to two schools.
Awilda Hernandez, Ronald Reagan Academy School Number Thirty. Mrs. Hernandez, the current PTO President, is a valued member of the learning community. School Number Thirty students, team members, and families appreciate everything she has done in organizing activities, events, and fundraisers.
Helena Cabrera Francis C. Smith, Early Childhood Center School Number Fifty. Mrs. Cabrera, the PTO President at School Number Fifty, has been guiding the force behind its very successful PTO. Ms. Cabrera, along with her fellow executive PTO members, has created a very successful school year where the students, parents, and staff have all benefited from the endeavors.
Melissa Yano, Donald Stewart Early Childhood School Number Fifty-one. As PTO President for the past three years, Mrs. Yano has volunteered countless hours to help the school community in more ways than you can imagine. Her leadership abilities have inspired many parents to be involved in school initiatives to promote the success of all of the students. Mrs. Yano is truly an integral part of the school, the link between the internal and external stakeholders.
Yannis Aguilar, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Early Childhood Center School Number Fifty-two. Ms. Aguilar has been on the PTO for the past two years, serving as President in 2018-19. Through her enthusiasm and dedication, she has ensured the children of School Number Fifty-two have experienced fun and valuable activities and events throughout the year, including Fall Harvest
fall harvest festivals, fall treats, pictures with Santa, and the list goes on. Seema Fareed Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy. Alexander Hamilton Academy PTO president, Mrs. Fareed is a positive role model who has demonstrated care and a can-do attitude in showing that all is possible to meet personal goals with the right amount of determination. She's provided students and staff with exceptional learning activities and has truly been an asset in working with Hamilton's administrators. Eddie Martinez Coelho John Dwyer Technology Academy. Mr. Coelho, currently the PTO president, has served as president for the past three years. He is someone who always wants to help make a difference by building relationships with the community and the school. His impact has been significant in connecting the school and the families. Marisol Valencia Admiral William F. Halsey Health and Public Safety Academy. Ms. Valencia has done a wonderful job this year. As a caring mother, she's been involved in all parental school functions, served as a member of the stakeholders panel, and represented Halsey on the school's middle states team. Margarita Matos Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy. Mrs. Matos has served as PTO officer at Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy since 2016, during which she made great contributions to the school community. She's helped lead a number of initiatives school-wide, including our annual operation prom. Through her efforts and collaboration with the Board of Education, Mrs. Carvalho, and with the support of the board, the Jefferson Arts PTO has made it possible for a number of students to gather dresses and suits for the high school prom and eighth-grade dances. Michelle Velas Jonte Elizabeth High School Frank J. Sicero Academy. Mrs. Velas Jonte, president of the PTO, has been an integral and valuable member of the school improvement team for the past three years. Her role as the mother of two students has provided a lens for the faculty to see the school community from the eyes of parents and a student. She also has experience as a school administrator and can provide background and context for many school and district decisions to the rest of the school community. Krista Ramirez J. Christian Bullwich Finance Academy. Mrs. Ramirez, PTO president, has been at the forefront of our PTO efforts for the past three years. She's been dedicated to promoting the Bullwich Finance Academy program and advocated for the growth of our PTO in many ways to support the entire learning community. Please join me in a round of applause to all of our dedicated parents and faculty members. We thank you for your many hours of dedication to our schools.
I can't stand up any longer. So you can do that part. It's my real real leader just came over and said, hey, I heard you were retiring. Congratulations.
You were what?
Oh, thanks. I said, was that voluntary or involuntary?
It's money.
It'd be a lot funnier if I didn't have two kids involved.
Oh, yeah.
So I just was having to stand there. Why did they only find out?
You know, they always ask the same question. They always want to play your game.
Why is that?
I don't understand.
You know, the issue is, look, it's the damn good thing you caught it.
All right, we can get it. That's good. Okay, here we go. Everybody try to look at me, please, on three. Here we go, everybody. Here we go. One.
I hope they handle it well. I'm not going to do it.
I'm with you.
Hold one second. My turn. Big smiles. One more. Yay!
Not yet, right?
going to get the ball back up and rolling, okay? Thank you, directors. Thank you for, parents, for joining us tonight.
Um, with today's, uh, agenda setting and business setting meeting. Before we continue, on behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education, I am pleased to announce that through our work with the Elizabeth Education Association, we were able to negotiate a contract that is a win-win-win for EA members, Elizabeth Public Schools, and the Elizabeth community it serves. The board and the EA has been meeting over the past several months to negotiate the terms of a three-year contract. With the ratification of the contract by the members of the EA, we are pleased to see that the EA membership has an overwhelmingly positive view of the negotiated terms based on the voting results. I would like to thank the members of the EA negotiation team for their steadfast commitment to working with us to arrive at this moment. Negotiating contracts is an arduous task that requires multiple sides willing to work together for the best interest of all involved while attending our primary objective of serving the children of Elizabeth. As I have previously, I would like to acknowledge once more outgoing EA president, Mr. Joe Curtissu, for his admirable, and he's here with us, Mr. Curtissu?
Thank you.
I know I saw you.
My bad, my bad.
Mr. Curtissu?
Thank you.
Okay. He's always working. For his admirable service to the Elizabeth Public Schools and the EA, including one last time during negotiations of this new contract. We wish you well in your future endeavors, as well as a healthy and happy retirement. You're welcome. I also would like to thank my colleagues on the board for the time they dedicated to serving, I'm sorry, that they continue to dedicate to serving the Elizabeth community, and for working tirelessly to ensure that the provisions of this contract. As a board, we are proud to have reached agreement on this contract that rewards our team members who ensure every child achieves excellence, as well as rewards the Elizabeth community with a school district that continues to be efficiently operated while providing a high-quality education for its children. Let's continue to achieve excellence together. Thank you. At this time, we have a, um, video to show, once our IT guys are up and running? We're good, okay.
On behalf of the Elizabeth Public Schools, I would like to thank our students, team members, and Elizabeth Board of Education members for their unwavering commitment to excellence during the 2018-19 school year. I would also like to thank our families and Elizabeth community members for their continued support. Enjoy these highlights of our outstanding accomplishments this year that show that we are well on our way to becoming one of the highest-performing urban school districts in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will be going into public participation. The microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I call upon Mr. Edison Berrio.
Right there, yep.
Good evening. Madam President, Board President, Stana, Madam Vice President, Diana Barbosa, Madam Superintendent, Mrs. Hugemeyer, Board Members, Central Office, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, my name is Edison Berrio. I am a school counselor. I just came here tonight to say thank you. I have been working with the district for 15 years. It has been one of my most rewarding, rewarding experiences. And I want to thank the past and present board members for giving me the opportunity to work with the children of Elizabeth. Once again, it has been one of the most rewarding experiences. It has enriched my life as a person, as a human being, and as a school counselor and mental health clinician. Thank you, thank you once again. Fifteen years ago, when I joined the board, I appeared before the board in support of school uniforms. Fifteen years ago. Tonight, I am appearing before you, asking for your support, in support of a piece of legislation that is on the floor at, in Trenton, in the committee, Educational Committee. I am candidly requesting, the board president is Stana, the board vice president is Barbosa, the board members, Ms. Barcelus, Ms. Carvalho, Ms. Erez, Ms. Hernandez, Ms. Jacobs, Mrs. Ortega, Ms. Neron, to consider passing a resolution in support of the piece of legislation number 2861 and 3081. Some of you may be familiar with this piece of legislation. I have a copy here for the board members, and for Ms. Hugemeyer, for your kind consideration. We as school counselors, as social workers, and mental health clinicians play a very important role in the school district. This piece of legislation is sponsored by the president of the Education Committee, Senator Ruiz from Newark, co-sponsored by Senator Christine Conrado, Richard Codi, and Joseph Vitale from my district. Will mandate the school districts in the state of New Jersey.
I'm sorry, Mr. Berrio. We're gonna, it's three minutes, I'm sorry. Would, do you mind just wrapping it up?
Oh, yes.
Because we do have a list, and we want to continue our directors.
I have one more minute?
Wrap it up.
No, okay. So, so, thank you so much. If may I approach you and leave a copy for each one of the board members, and for Mrs. Hugemeyer, for your attention and consideration. And this district, and the state of New Jersey will be very thanks to you if you pass a resolution in support of this bill.
Thank you, Mrs. Berrio.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Maria Lorenz.
By now, good evening. By now, you should all have a copy of the policy that was put in place by this board in 2016. So, a few things about this special education policy. Again, last time I spoke at this microphone, I talked about how the district creates policy and violates them, and does absolutely nothing to rectify it. So, I'm still waiting on your response, Ms. Hugemeyer, as to what is the repercussion when you set a policy and you violate it, because you still haven't told me what that consequence is for violating a school policy. Okay? Your CPAC policy states that parents are recommended by the principals and the child study teams. But if you look on the last page, your second attachment on the school's website, it states that we are looking for parents that are interested in joining the EC PAC. So, parents are a little bit confused, as you can understand, as to whether the people are picking them, or are they picking themselves? And is there a voting process? Because that's not clear either. In addition to that, I also want to point out your second violation in your policy, which states that all parent members of the committee shall engage in training. Well, I regretfully inform you that nobody in the CPAC this year was appropriately trained. They didn't even know that the state has published a manual called the CPAC, which is to serve as guidance. So, I don't understand what training they were given, because they weren't giving any. As a matter of fact, I will inform you that there have been some FERPA violations, because we've had a member, same member I spoke about before, that called children retarded, twice, that I asked you all to please do a resolution against that word, in which this board has not responded. That same parent has been taking parental concerns and feeding them to the board members that are sitting here today. That is not what the CPAC is supposed to do. It's supposed to collect systemic concerns, not address individual concerns, and much less involve the board, which all of you have been involved in. So, I will continue to the last violation of your policy, which states that the CPAC shall develop its own bylaws. I regret to inform you again, there have been no bylaws created. Yet, this is a committee that works in conjunction with this board, that this board is aware of, and yet it is running amok, because no one has put anything in place, and you're violating your own policy. I suggest you take a look at this policy as well, and I think frankly, in the future, I might just come back, because I'm finding so many violations in your policies, I might point out a policy violation per month, or every time you have public speaking here. This is an absolute embarrassment, and not what this board is supposed to be doing. And I want to know, Ms. Hugemeyer, what are the repercussions when you create a policy and nobody follows it?
Mrs. Lorenz, I want to thank you for your concerns. However, please note that the CPAC information you have provided to us this evening with regard to the webpage is not managed by the district. The CPAC webpage is managed by the parents that serve on CPAC. That's a parent organization. So, thank you for bringing this information, and we will gladly share with the parents with regard to the selection process. But please also note, the district does not manage this website. The, this is a link, but is not managed by the district. It is managed by the parents that serve on CPAC. So, thank you very much for your concern.
So, who vets the content, Ms. Hugemeyer? Who vets the content? Because how do you know that people are in, you know, having inappropriate language or content? So, who vets this? Because that's under your responsibility, is it not?
Thank you for your concern, but the websites that are created by our parents are not managed by the district. It is a separate communication. I will gladly speak to the parents that we have honored this evening for their outstanding dedication to our district, that have worked tirelessly each and every month in working with our special needs population. So, thank you for bringing your concerns, and we will pass them on to the parents.
You're very welcome. So, again, I still haven't had an answer to the question as to what is the repercussion when policies are being violated? Because last month, I came to you with an independent evaluation policy, as you recall, and I stated, I'm sorry.
Ms. Lorenz, I'm sorry.
Yes, I understand, Stephanie.
I'm sorry.
But I will wrap it up for you in a second. Last month, I came here with an independent evaluation, and I also told you that my right was being violated when I was told that it was only 20 minutes versus 35, and this came from one of your special counsel. So, again, I ask you, what is the repercussion when somebody violates your policy, please? I would like to know that. I've been asking that for two board meetings. So, we will not receive an answer today on the advice of your board counsel. Thank you. This is how the district functions, people.
Ms. Danielle Feinberg?
Good evening. I have actually spoken to city council on this issue, and now I'm going to address you as well. I recently found out that Elizabeth is purchasing, Elizabeth, the city, is purchasing some of their water from Newark. I am sure that everyone is aware that Newark currently has a water crisis, where lead is coming into their water, because the water is corrosive. In 2016, on this day in 2016, they actually had a symposium on water quality that you guys held. And we also, on your own website, you have the water testing that was done in 2000, I believe it was 2016 as well, where one of the schools tested as high as 6,740 parts per billion, when the EPA cut off for dangerous, is 15 parts per billion. From what I understand, somewhere there should be records saying how you guys remediated that to make the water safe for our children. I know that some schools are still providing, my own child's school, which didn't have very high elevated levels, are providing water to my pre-K child, and the water in his room doesn't work. That's not a sustainable solution. I'm asking where the records would be for what you have done to remediate, if you have done the remediation, and what the maintenance on those filters is to keep our children safe from this. The water that we were buying then was unsafe. It's gotten worse since then. Everybody is aware of that, if they've been following the news. So, what are you guys doing to monitor? I know that you don't, aren't legally required to for another couple of years. What are you doing to monitor now to keep our children safe from the lead in the water now? Thank you.
Up next, Ms. Celia Nunez. Do we need a translator?
Spanish? Me escucha?
Sí.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Questa, please. Thank you, Mr. Questa. So, make sure that we give her six minutes? Okay.
Mi nombre es Celia Nunez. Muy buenas noches con todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay. Yo tengo un niño especial, y vengo a hablarles que yo aquí traigo todas las pruebas de sus especialistas.
I have a child in special education, and I have evidence here of all his difficulties.
A él le tocó la semana, el mes pasado, su IP, donde yo le digo al case manager.
Last month, there was an IP meeting.
Que le traigo las pruebas de los especialistas diciendo que él necesita su soporte porque él tiene problemas de aceptar sus emociones.
She brought some evidence to the case manager, indicating that the child needs support controlling his emotions.
Yo le dije a ella que si me acepta las cartas, y ella me dijo que no me puede aceptar.
Case manager refused to accept the documentation she had from specialists.
Por eso vine aquí para que ustedes me den la respuesta. Por qué motivo? Porque es mi sacrificio como madre.
That's why I'm here, to get an answer from you, because, you know, I sacrificed myself as a parent to...
Puede creer que los niños en escuela reciben terapia de speech. Son cinco niños que les cuesta concentrarse.
There are five students who need speech therapy.
Yo tengo que salir a otros lados a buscar para que mi hija pueda avanzar.
I have to get help elsewhere, so my child can advance.
Yo le pido a ustedes que se, por favor, se, pueden ayudar a todos los padres a que sus niños puedan avanzar.
I'm asking you to please to help all the parents, so all the students can make progress.
Señora, voy a pedir que usted hable con nuestro Assistant Superintendent, señor Cortés, para tomar todos los detalles, para poder ayudarla y apoyarla. I'm asking that the parent please meet with our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Cortés. I'm interested in taking note of all of the information, so that we're able to properly support you.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Christina Marrera?
Good evening. I'd like to address the email that I sent about a week ago regarding the school lunch situation. Jamie Lovett, I'm sure you received it, along with several board members and Madam Superintendent. I'm still waiting for a response from someone regarding that situation. I'm a parent in this district. My children eat the food in this district, and I expect... that I would get a response to emails sent. But again, I'm not surprised. You had said here probably a few months ago that there was going to be, when Jamie did her presentation about the food in the district, that there was going to be food tasting for parents and students. I'm still waiting for that to happen. There's been a rumor that it has happened. If it has, we like to tell everybody about, you know, the tours that we do at schools and stuff. So if this is happening, I don't understand why then parents aren't being told about it. That's number one. Number two is, I'm very glad that that parent came here to speak about her child and I hope Mr. Cortez has open office hours because I have a plethora of parents who are having issues with their children. One of them is myself. Now, I have restrained myself from coming here and speaking about my own personal issues that I'm having with my son. But enough is enough and I'm having to take my child and myself into due process with this district, something that I do not want to do. Because he gets great support at the school that he's at, but there is only so much that they can do when they have their hands tied. I am going to have to spend $3,000 to have my son evaluated, but I am lucky because I have the $3,000 to spend. We are in a district that almost 80 to 90% of these students are on free and reduced lunch. Parents don't have the money to spend on evaluations. My son most likely has dyslexia and this district is refusing to have him evaluated. You have a child find law that it is your responsibility to test him, to see whatever it is that he may have. This is happening not only to myself, and I am not here for me, okay? Because I can pay the $3,000 to have my son evaluated. I am here for the, the, I don't even know how many countless parents, okay, that come to me with the same issue, that this district is refusing to have their children evaluated when there are issues. Now, you can sit there and tap yourselves on the back for the great job that you're all doing, but when children are falling through their cracks and my son has to come home and tell me why, is he not as smart as the other kids, mommy? And I have to look at him and tell him, because you are smart. This district is just not doing their job, which is to support these children and make sure they have the interventions that they need, not to give raises to Assistant Superintendents, not to hire board members for whatever the heck you're going to be hiring him for, okay? Your job is to make sure that these children get the education that they deserve. Diana, I expect more from you.
Mrs. Marrera, with regard to your concern regarding your son, I'm going to ask that you please meet with Dr. Sedano, who's the Assistant Superintendent for School Number 21, so that we can obtain all the necessary information. With regard to your first concern regarding the students' lunch, my understanding is that information was relayed to you with regard to that situation. With regard to what you posted on social media, that student had various options with regard to what was afforded during that lunchtime, the chose, the child chose what it is that you put on social media. So that is the response. During, we have, as you know, our menus are posted online. There are various choices that are available for our students and in fact, I can ask Mrs. Levitt to elaborate on the menus that, the menu that was made available that day. And Dr. Sedano, if you could please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Regarding the menus offered that particular day, one was from School Two, the other one was Frank's at Corel. In addition to what was mentioned on social media, we had various fresh fruits, vegetables, juices, and milk, two types of milk offered to the students that day.
We're talking about quality to food they provide. That's what we're talking about, Jamie. You said you guys were going to have food tests and for the kids to be able to taste the food and to know what you get.
Thank you, Mrs. Carvalho. I'd also like to mention that what the board undertook was, and actually a commitment on their part during their respective lunchtimes, they actually went to various schools together with Mr. Questa and Mr. Kennedy to experience lunchtime. Our director, Levitt, as well, to various sites, both elementary and high schools. Mr. Neron, I believe you were a part of that group as well, had, Ms. Bathless, as well, had an opportunity to experience the various options that are made available to our students each and every day. And they themselves were the ones who actually enjoyed a wonderful lunch during their multiple visits to our schools. So I'd like to thank our board because that's how important it is to our board. Once they had received various concerns from parents, they took it upon themselves to investigate them on their own during their lunchtime to ensure that if what it is that was being reported to them was accurate and it was a very positive experience, from what I understand. So for clarification for our community, there was not information that was put out with regard to inviting parents and students to a taste test. Our board committed to visiting various schools in order to have the experience that our children have each and every day. And I thank you for your time. Thank you, Alka. Next up, we have Ms. Araceli. Is Ms. Araceli here? Okay.
Necesito, por favor, que me ayuden. Sí. Gracias.
Sorry, I couldn't announce, your...
Espejel?
Espejel. Okay. Perdón.
Okay. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Araceli Espejel. Soy mamá de un estudiante de necesidades especiales.
Good evening. I'm the parent of a student of special needs.
Tengo muchas preguntas para ustedes y, por favor, necesito respuestas.
I have many questions and I, please, I need answers.
¿Por qué no hay elecciones para el CPAC para que los padres participemos?
Why don't we have elections for CPAC so parents can participate?
A mi hijo falta una semana para que terminen las clases.
Only one week to go, so school is over.
Y hasta el día de hoy no me puedo comunicar con la KIS manager.
And as of today, I'm not able to contact the case manager.
Para que le hagan el IP que se requiere anualmente.
So they completely require IP.
Le he dejado mensajes.
I have left messages.
No me devuelve las llamadas.
I don't get a phone call back.
No puedo entrar a la escuela sin una cita.
I'm not able to visit a school without an appointment.
No sé si es una escuela o es una cárcel.
I don't know if it is a school or if it is a prison.
Aún no hay respuesta. O una respuesta clara. Todo es ignorado.
Everything's ignored and I don't get an answer.
¿Por qué todos los niños especiales están excluidos de paseos?
Why do we exclude all the special needs students to go on trips?
De reconocimientos.
Do we recognize?
No tienen ninguna motivación.
There is nothing to motivate them.
No aceptan las evaluaciones de médicos profesionales de afuera.
They do not accept the professional evaluations from outside doctors.
La gente de adentro de la escuela...
The individuals within the schools?
Dicen que ellos son los que saben más que los médicos de afuera.
They say that they know better than anyone else from the outside.
Pero desgraciadamente, si ellos saben, ¿por qué no les dan lo que los niños necesitan?
Unfortunately, they know so much, why don't they provide the children with what they need?
Lo único que reciben los niños especiales en el Distrito Escolar de Elizabeth...
The only thing that the special needs students receive in Elizabeth?
Terapia de habla.
Speech therapy.
Solamente. No hay más nada para ellos.
There's nothing else for them.
Yo he tenido que recurrir por mis propios medios...
I had to do it myself, my own expenses.
...a doctores profesionales...
To doctors.
...para que le den un tratamiento adicional a mi hijo, no droga.
So that they give my son additional treatment, not drugs.
Para que él pueda salir adelante y ser un niño igual a todos.
So that he can make progress just like any other child.
Le pedí a la maestra que trabajáramos para ver cómo reacciona mi hijo con el tratamiento que tiene.
I asked the teacher to work with him with the treatment that he's getting now.
Se terminó el año escolar y nunca recibí ninguna carta de ella para decirme si estaba mejor o peor.
The school year has ended and has not received any communication from the teachers to indicate whether there was any progress or not.
Señora, ¿cuál escuela?
Siete.
¿La siete?
Necesito muchas respuestas, nadie me las da.
I need answers and no one provides them to me.
Señora, le voy a pedir que usted se siente con el Assistant Superintendent, el señor Cortez. Mr. Cortez?
No, let her finish. She's still not going to stay.
No entiendo qué es lo que está pasando. Yo he venido peleando toda la vida.
I don't understand what's happening. I've been fighting all my life.
Desde que a mi hijo lo diagnosticaron.
Since my, my son was diagnosed.
Lo, las respuestas que he recibido de ustedes...
The answers that I have received from you...
Es que los niños especiales no existen.
It's a special needs student, they do not exist.
Son invisibles.
They're invisible.
Nadie los toma en cuenta.
Nobody cares about them.
No tienen un trato igual que los niños normales.
They're not treated as well as the so-called normal students.
Todas las mamás de niños especiales...
All parents of special needs students.
...hemos tenido que recurrir a todo lo alternativo fuera del Distrito Escolar.
I've had to go outside the district to get help.
El distrito simplemente dice no hay fondos.
The district simply says there's no money.
No hay más terapias.
There's more therapy.
Los grados del niño me dicen solo excelente, excelente, excelente.
The grades continue to be excellent.
Los médicos de afuera dicen que el niño necesita demasiado.
But outside doctors say that they need more help.
No saben de dónde sacan esas calificaciones.
They don't understand why, how they can be excellent.
Y si no tengo comunicación con la maestra...
If I'm not able to communicate with the teacher...
...tengo que creerle a los médicos que están afuera.
Then I have to believe the outside doctors.
He tenido también que recurrir a otros, a otras terapias en el King University.
I have to go to King University to get additional help.
Son médicos profesionales...
Professional individuals there.
Creo que ustedes lo saben.
I believe you know that.
Y todas las cartas que me dan simplemente no las aceptan en la escuela.
And every letter that I get from them, they are not accepted at the school.
Yo necesito a quien puedo recurrir para que me ayuden con mi hijo.
I need to know who do I go to so I can get help for my son.
El currículo de él es de pre-K cuando él supuestamente está en cuarto grado.
He's in fourth grade, but he's following a pre-K curriculum.
Cada año es lo mismo.
Every year is the same.
ABC, canciones, y ver movies.
Songs and watching movies.
Necesito respuestas, por favor.
I need answers, please. Thank you.
Mr. Cortez, if you could meet with the parent and obtain all the necessary information so that we can look into it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Amanda Bing. Um, sorry.
Yeah, she did. She... All right. Thank you, yes. Um, can I start? I'm sorry. Okay. Hello and good, good evening to all. My name is Amanda. I'm here to speak on behalf of my son Zachary. He attends Benjamin Franklin School, Number 13. A few concerns that I have is the lack of consistency in teachers in my, my son's school. He's constantly having substitute teachers, which that, personally, that's a problem. He can't get comfortable with a teacher and actually learn. Another thing is the substitute teacher that my son has now, he, she, he or she send home benchmarks home, which those are not required to be done at home. As I put in the code in the computer to Power School, it said it was only to be done between hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. So my son has a computer at home, so he decided to wake up at 6:30 in the morning to complete his benchmark prior to school ending because the substitute threatened that they would not attend field day if they did not complete this benchmark at home. And right now, for now, that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Bing? Ms. Bing? Could I ask you please to meet with our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Finch Johnson? Next up, Ms. Loretta Stevens.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Superintendent Hugemeyer and President and Vice President and the Board. I stand here as a resident of Elizabeth and also a community activist. I was approached by the Islamic community, which I will ask them to stand at this time. I was approached by the Islamic community in reference to a holiday. They, they, they expressed to me that some of the local districts like Irvington, Hillside, et cetera, et cetera, of our local communities have acknowledged their, their holidays. Unfortunately, Elizabeth has not done that and they feel somewhat offended and they would like you to put that on the agenda as something that we should look into. We think it's, they think it's, and I, I as well, I'm not, I'm not Muslim, however, fair is only fair. They should be given that due diligence. They're requesting, if you would bear with me, the holiday of Fitha and also the holiday of Adha. Some of the other religious communities have holidays, as they stated. They've asked me to represent them because of a language barrier, Christians and Jewish holidays, and they would like to be acknowledged. Thank you.
Mrs. Stevens, do you mind if I ask one of our Assistant Superintendents to take additional information from you with regard to the dates? And I'm not sure that I have all of the information taken down properly. Okay, thank you. Certainly. Thank you, Director Pedalis. I appreciate it for stepping up. Next up, Mr. Kason Little.
Before I begin, I just would like to respectfully ask that you all check your emails as I've sent an attachment. Dear Elizabeth Board of Education and Superintendent Hugemeyer, This cease and desist order is to inform you that your harassment and intimidation attempts must cease and desist immediately. It will not be tolerated. This letter is to demand that your harassment and intimidation must also cease and desist Should you continue to pursue these activities to violate, in violation of the cease and desist order, we will not hesitate to pursue further legal action against you. It has been an entire long four and a half months that I had to endure, okay, harassment and intimidation from the Office of the Superintendent since you failed to address the matter, as well as the super, as well as the building principal, which also includes, but not limited to, civil action and/or criminal complaints, annoying, provoking, and causing emotional distress, detention and suspension attempts, making a false spoken statement damaging to representation since 3/1619 to current. Please note that I have a right to remain free from your intimidating tactics and I will, and I will take responsibility to protect that right. Note that a copy of this letter and a record of its delivery will be stored. This cease and desist order demands that you immediately discontinue and do not, at any point in the future, under any circumstances, to do the following to me: pursue, harass, attack, slander, threaten, stalk, shadow, gather information about and/or block any of my movements in the school community where we are fully, and let me just repeat that word, where we are fully operational, okay, on social media and throughout our community. Note that your behavior is a violation- Note que su comportamiento es una violación del Código de Justicia de Nueva Jersey, título 2C, coma 12, coma 10, robaje, título 2C, coma 33, coma 34, intimidación, título 2A, coma 14, coma 3, un año, libra o ofender. Si eligen voluntariamente continuar su curso de acción actual, no hesitaré en perseguir acción legal contra este distrito. Como dije, no, repito, no seré intimidado, intimidado, ni intimidado por ninguno de ustedes. El superintendente dijo en la reunión de la ciudad del sábado que recibió la llamada mientras estaba en el consejo municipal de alguien en el consejo municipal que dijeron que estaba allí. Y estoy seguro de que fue el señor Quest, porque también es miembro del consejo municipal. Eso se considera intimidación. Después de las horas escolares, no es su negocio dónde voy o qué hago. Sabes que me descartan a las 1:38 aproximadamente. Y eso no es su negocio en el board, ni en el oficio central, o dónde voy o cómo me descartan.
Señor Kason, por favor, terminen. Gracias.
Este mensaje es para nuestra comunidad. Como saben, todos los estudiantes son mantidos a la misma estándar. Todos los estudiantes deben cumplir con nuestro Código de conducta estudiantil y cuando eso se viola, se necesita abordar una acción disciplinaria adecuada. Así que como resultado de una infracción, se tomó una acción disciplinaria. Y como todos nuestros administradores y nuestros padres saben y todos nuestros administradores que están aquí esta noche, es un proceso muy claro. El principal se reúne con el estudiante, le advierte con respecto a la infracción y pone en marcha la acción disciplinaria adecuada. Y eso es lo que ha ocurrido aquí. Tenemos a un estudiante que está muy molesto con respecto a la acción disciplinaria que se tomó. Todo está en consonancia con nuestro Código de conducta estudiantil y eso es lo que cumplimos aquí como distrito. Muchas gracias.
Siguiente, señora María Echeverria.
Eso es bueno, eso es bueno. Estoy muy feliz de haberse inscrito para hablar esta noche, ok? Porque estoy escuchando mucho de las cosas a las que me relaciono, ok? Ok, así que lo primero, Lorenz, tengo que abordar esto para usted. Así que está en el registro. Yo misma, en nuestra reunión del CPAC, dije que no me gustaba cómo llegamos a nuestras posiciones. Ok, según las leyes de ley, dijo que deberíamos haber sido votados. Y no quería que nadie dijera que había un acuerdo de puerta trasera, ok? Porque sé que el antiguo board hacía todos estos acuerdos de puerta trasera y whatever. Pero de todos modos, así que ya dije eso, está en el registro, ok? No me gustó eso, ok? Y su entera cosa fue, oh, pero los padres que están haciendo los votos, no saben quién eres, no van a saber a quién votar, bla, bla, bla. Así fue. Cristina, donde sea que vaya, yo también entiendo sobre la cuestión de la dislexia. Mi hija fue como cuatro o cinco años atrás, como estoy seguro que mucha gente sabe, ok? Porque por alguna razón tienes el problema del comportamiento y ellos lo abordarán de inmediato. Si eres tranquilo y callado, no, ellos te dejarán luchar y fallar. Y recuerdo venir con mi cosa sobre todo. Mi hijo estaba derramándose en un pool y todos estos carteles de vida aquí estaban solo mirando a mi hijo derramar, ok? Y sí, tu hijo, Cristina, donde sea que esté, mi hija se volvió muy antisocial, muy retirada, todo. Y he pedido a este distrito durante como un año que encuentre algo social para mi hijo para hacer en este distrito porque ella es social en su escuela que está más de una hora lejos, pero viene aquí y no sabe cómo ser social en este distrito. Así que obtuve a mi hija en un campamento de tres días que, por supuesto, mi distrito ahora está diciendo que no es impulsado por el IEP. Eso es lo que obtengo de Done todo el tiempo. No es impulsado por el IEP, ok? Bueno, el parte social y emocional es parte de un IEP. Quieren que sean miembros independientes de la sociedad, ok? Danielle, ok, usted con el agua. Ok. Sé que me encontré con un video de Robert F. Kennedy Jr. donde el agua de Hudson viene a Jersey y es un sopa tóxico. Así que no sé si alguno de nuestro agua viene de ahí, ok? Sé todo sobre eso. Y para todos ustedes, madres especiales allí afuera, ok, créeme, sé la lucha. Y digo que necesitamos un plan de transición en Elizabeth. Sé que conocí a algún padre que fue, lo que fue la noche pasada. Espero que ese supervisor vaya a usted. Tengo cinco segundos porque ahora el ángel tiene 18 años, no entiende. ¿Por qué tiene que dar permiso a la compañía de seguros para hablar conmigo? Que soy su madre, entonces, ¿por qué no puedo ir a su trabajo? ¿Por qué no puedo hablar con quien sea? Porque no había transición. Nadie enseña a estos niños estas cosas.
En este momento, cerré la parte de comentarios públicos de esta reunión.
Cuando comencemos nuestra reunión de agenda esta noche, me gustaría invitar al señor Mike Regio, nuestro director de transporte. En conservación de nuestra política de supervisión de gestión, el señor Regio estará proporcionando nuestra presentación de la junta esta noche con respecto al departamento de transporte. Y me gustaría tomar un momento para agradecer a todos los miembros del equipo del departamento de transporte que están aquí para apoyar al señor Regio. Lo apreciamos. Gracias.
Buenas tardes, señora superintendente, comisionadas del board, miembros del público. Esta noche, me gustaría presentarle al Distrito de Transporte y de Comunicación de la Escuela de Elizabeth. En esta presentación, voy a hablar de la logística y las operaciones diarias del departamento de transporte. Así que voy a empezar con nuestra fleet. Tenemos una fleet, un total de 43 autobuses, 38, 54 autobuses de escuela de pasajeros, 20, 220 autobuses de pasajeros pequeños, tres autobuses de ruedas para un total de 43. Cada autobús es inspeccionado dos veces al año por el estado. Hacemos un control preventivo de mantenimiento, de desempeño tres veces al año en cada autobús. Cada autobús es equipado con un sistema GPS de seguimiento estándar. Cada autobús es equipado con cuatro cámaras interiores y actualmente tenemos 30 autobuses equipados con aire acondicionado. Cada autobús es también equipado con un sistema de check de seguridad del estudiante que requiere que cada conductor de autobús, después de, ellos realizan una ruta para caminar hacia el back del autobús y hacer una inspección posttrip. 20 de los nuevos autobuses están equipados con sensores de studentes del frente y del back y cada autobús está equipado con una radio digital de comunicación de dos caminos. Antes de cada vuelo, nuestros conductores realizan una inspección de seguridad de cada autobús. Nuestros autobuses son limpios diariamente, dentro y fuera, si se permite el clima. Un equipo de conductores de autobuses cuida los fluidos y reparaciones de espejos y cualquier reparación minor que pueda ser necesaria. Las rutas de las escuelas de Elizabeth pueden identificarse por un número de ruta visible en la señal en la ventana. Nuestros autobuses, nuestro estacionamiento tiene una pestaña de espejos pintada en el suelo que permite a nuestros conductores de autobús ajustar los espejos diariamente. Y los registros de mantenimiento se mantienen por la vida de cada autobús. Cada autobús undergo una mantenimiento preventivo cada cuarto año. Creo que ya dije eso. Hemos ciclado por alrededor del 50% de nuestra fleet con nuevos autobuses de escuela. Y ayuda a nuestro distrito a bajar nuestros costos de mantenimiento al mantener una nueva fleet. Volviendo a las cámaras, tenemos cámaras HD instaladas en cada autobús. Una cámara está hacia la entrada. Una hacia el frente y el back, una desde el back hacia el frente y una en medio. 24 de nuestros autobuses también tienen cámaras de freno de paro que recoge la actividad exterior del autobús, así como es capaz de detectar vehículos si pasan por una parada en el autobús. También, nuestros autobuses están equipados con sensores de detección de niños en el frente y el trasero del autobús. Nuestros autobuses nuevos en realidad tienen cámaras donde puedes ver los niños caminar por el frente y el back del autobús. Nuestros autobuses antiguos tienen estos sensores. Este es un botón de check de niños. Todos nuestros autobuses están equipados con estas alarmas que después de un minuto de descanso del autobús, si el conductor no camina hacia el back del autobús para realizar una inspección posttrip, el autobús comenzará a sonar y las luces comenzarán a salir locas. Recientemente compramos un nuevo sistema GPS que nos permite ver la ubicación de todos nuestros vehículos, mantiene un registro de todas las paradas con un tiempo de etiqueta, nos permite crear fences geográficos, nos da alertas de velocidad, de freno. También está conectado a nuestro software de rutas, así que se une a las rutas, nos envía notificaciones de presión. También tenemos una aplicación móvil en nuestro teléfono donde podríamos trackearlo si estamos en la carretera. Nos da alertas de check de motor, alertas de freno pesado. También mantiene un reporte de cualquier incidencia que el autobús pueda pasar por, así como informes de combustible. También hemos gobernado nuestros, no todos ellos, pero los nuevos autobuses que nos permiten con el software gobernar nuestro límite de velocidad a 65 millas por hora. Ha adquirido EasyPass y esto es para la calificación para el transporte. Estudiantes especiales no tienen límite de millas. Nuestros estudiantes pre-ke necesitan vivir más de un kilómetro y medio para calificar. Nuestra busina de courtesy es un kilómetro punto tres. Si un estudiante vive y asiste a una escuela de alrededor, necesita estar más de dos millas para requerir el bussing. Y las escuelas secundarias son dos y medio millas. Requerencia de transporte estudiantil. Así que nuestro distrito, la forma en que funcionamos es que recibimos nuestras solicitudes de transporte estudiantil, luego el estudiante es ruidoso, el guardián se informa y se hacen las arreglos de transporte. Cada escuela en el distrito, servicios especiales o niñez temprana tiene acceso a un formulario de solicitud donde se envía una solicitud de transporte y esta solicitud sale de nuestra parte y luego la procesamos y ruidamos al estudiante. Es como un sistema de boletín. Así que una vez que el estudiante es ruidoso, lo cerramos y la persona que abrió la solicitud sabe la información de ruta y que el estudiante es ruidoso. Nuestro software de rutas, el software da una fecha de recogida, nos permite generar cartas, enviarlas a los padres y a los guardias con la información de ruta y las reglas de seguridad de los autobuses de escuela. El software también proporciona una hoja de roster para cada conductor con direcciones turnadas. Y también tenemos una capacidad de compartilaje donde los principales de cada escuela son capaces de ver estas rutas en su parte. El software de rutas nos permite flagear a los estudiantes para necesidades especiales. Podríamos hacer servicio de curva hacia curva o paradas de esquina, hacer las rutas más eficientes, crear asientos para programas deportivos, nuestros programas de sábado. Y también está integrado con nuestro sistema GPS. Y también obtenemos datos live de Power School. Elink es parte de nuestro software de rutas. Esta parte de nuestro software de rutas está en el lado de usuario donde nuestros principales y maestros tienen acceso a esto. Y si necesitan ir y ver cada ruta de su escuela, son capaces de ver quién pertenece a qué ruta y desde ahí poner al niño en el correcto autobús. En nuestra oficina, tenemos una junta de despacho que es la actual lifetime de todas nuestras rutas que actualmente hacemos en casa, con el conductor y el autobús asignado. Esto permite a todos en la oficina estar en la misma página y saber qué está pasando a todo momento durante el día, si los autobuses cambian o si los conductores cambian o si una ruta en particular ha cambiado. A partir de 2018, 2019, teníamos un total de 350 rutas de autobús escolares. 64 rutas fueron realizadas en casa debido a los estagnantes tiempos. Fuimos capaces de hacer nuestras rutas de escuela secundaria y nuestras rutas especiales o pre-ke. Así que cada uno de nuestros conductores de autobús en realidad realizan dos rutas en las madres y en las tarde. El resto de nuestras rutas son contratadas a través de los Servicios Educativos de la Comisión de County Union, Servicios Educativos de la Comisión de la Academia, County Morris, Compañía de autobuses Valani, Shore Vans y J&amp;J Transportes. Durante los últimos tres años, hemos renovado nuestras rutas contratadas sin la incrementación estatal. Hablamos con ellos para renovar a la misma costo cada año. Así que durante el año escolar de 2017-2018, transportamos 1,531 estudiantes de escuelas de magna, 2,978 estudiantes de necesidades especiales, 675 pre-ke, 61 non-public y 95 estudiantes de escuela de vocación, por un total de 5,340 estudiantes. Nuestro sistema de viajes de campo también, todos los estudiantes en el distrito tienen acceso a este programa web. Es accesible a todos en el distrito. Nos da la capacidad de crear informes para todos los viajes de campo, programación, correos electrónicos son enviados a los solicitantes y también nos proporciona las direcciones de conductor para los viajes de campo. Programas de verano, para el año pasado, transportamos para el programa de álgebra y matemáticas 134 estudiantes, que requería un autobús, y lo hicimos con tres rutas que eran estudiantes especiales. El programa ESL para K-8, transportamos 329 estudiantes con seis rutas. La escuela High School ESL, transportamos 71 estudiantes con dos rutas. La ESY K-8, transportamos 176 estudiantes, que requería autobuses con seis rutas, que eran estudiantes especiales. La escuela High School ESY, transportamos 32 estudiantes, que también requería autobuses. Lo hicimos con dos rutas y eran también necesidades especiales. Promoción y retención, transportamos 202 estudiantes con un total de cuatro rutas. Programa de recreación, transportamos 90 estudiantes, que requería autobuses también, con cuatro rutas. Hicimos dos rutas de ruedas para el distrito. También transportamos para el programa Source, Community Center Mickey Walker, teníamos cinco rutas en total. Así que un total de 34 rutas y en el verano transportamos 1,034 estudiantes, todo hecho en casa sin contratar una sola ruta. También hacemos deportes diarios. Teníamos deportes diarios, asientos de deportes, y eventos deportivos de fin de semana. Transportamos nuestra banda. Hacemos eventos de transporte masivo para un salto saludable, la sinfónica de Nueva Jersey, NFL Play 60, arte adolescente. Para la mayoría de estos eventos, en un día regular, transportamos casi 4,000 estudiantes a un lugar. Seguridad en cuanto a los autobuses de emergencia, evacuación de emergencia. Estos son requeridos por ley para hacerlo dos veces al año. En realidad acabamos de terminar nuestra segunda sesión en marzo y nuestra primera sesión fue realizada en diciembre. in December. These are all done on location. And not only do we just do our in-house routes, we also have our contractors perform these emergency evacuation drills, as required by law. All our school bus drivers and bus aides are trained every year at the beginning of the year. We have a welcome-back meeting, and we have somebody that comes in to train our drivers just to refresh, and a lot of the times, we mostly deal with special needs students I thought this picture was actually pretty nice, because this is one of our bus drivers, Mr. Bill, as many of you know. So our future goals, we are looking into alternative fuels to lower costs, looking into expanding our department to take over more work if possible. Student identification system, this is one that we've been toying with for a couple of years, is to-- a system where it automatically detects a student when they get onto the bus, keeping attendance of when they are on the bus and when they're not on the bus. So all our Elizabeth Public School drivers, they're noticeable by their blue uniforms, as you can see, we have them here. They're trained yearly on school bus transportation. They undergo random alcohol and drug testing. They perform daily pre-trips of their school buses. They keep updated rosters of their school bus routes. And that's-- And they're by far no comparison to our contractors. The quality that they provide is amazing. At the request of Commissioner Carvalho, we had made a video, with your permission,
The Elizabeth Public Schools Transportation Department takes pride in transporting over five thousand students to and from school daily. Our first and most important priority is to ensure all these students are transported safely. In order to accomplish this, we must first provide the safest vessels for our students. And to accomplish this, our school buses are inspected thoroughly twice a school year by the New Jersey State Bus Inspection Team, as required by law. All Elizabeth school buses are also on a maintenance schedule to preserve and restore equipment reliability by replacing worn components before they actually fail. Maintenance activities include partial or complete overhauls as specified periods, such as oil changes, lubrication, and minor adjustments. Keeping a fleet of forty school buses road-ready for everyday tasks takes a dedicated group of team members, assigned to spot-check daily and reporting all major and minor issues to management. All bus drivers perform a daily pre-trip inspection of their vehicles before leaving the bus depot to perform their routes. All new Elizabeth Public School buses come specked out with the Abigail Law sensors in the front and rear of the buses. This feature allows the bus driver to detect if the child is in front or rear of the bus before it even moves. Also, five high-definition cameras strategically placed to monitor all students on the bus, and one camera underneath the stop sign to monitor outside activities. These new school buses also have a modern GPS system that reports the vehicle locations at all times. The new GPS system also has the capability of recording mechanical issues on all its vehicles, as well as speeding incidents, idling, and harsh turning. Another important feature is a student check system, which triggers an alarm on the bus if the driver does not physically walk to the back of the bus to check for sleeping or hiding children. With student safety as our primary concern, we conduct emergency school bus evacuation drills twice a year. These drills are performed on location and done with precision to assure all students understand what to do in the case of an emergency.
All right, everyone, we're going to be doing an evacuation drill. I need everybody to remain calm, do not run down the aisles. The first thing you guys have to do is take off your seatbelts slowly, okay? And as you're taking off your seatbelts, we're going to unload the back of the bus first, so the front bus, don't run back there yet. As the back aisles start coming out, we have emergency exits on each side of the bus. We have two on the ceilings. This is one of the ones on the roof. In the middle of the bus, there's one on each side, on the windows, and there's another one right here. Okay, and as we're evacuating out through the back of the bus, we are going to sit down on the edge of the back of the door, and then we're going to pretty much slide off the side. We're not going to jump out of the bus.
The Elizabeth Public School bus drivers are highly trained in student transportation. This group of professionals are ready every day to deal with hazardous road conditions, weather, traffic, and other problems that can occur on a day-to-day basis. Our Elizabeth Public School drivers and bus aides bring a different setting to transporting our students. Our drivers strive every day to bring a caring and stress-free environment for all students before they arrive at their schools. The bus driver is the first person that the student interacts with at the beginning of their day, and our drivers bring a certain quality of service to ensure their day starts This type of behavior on a school bus is unsafe for all students and personnel.[1019.25][1019.25][screaming]
I need everybody to calm down! Sit down! Please, everybody, sit down! Calm down!
At the beginning of the school year, when the parents receive the transportation letter and information, we also attach a copy of the school bus rules for their safety. This is the type of behavior that is expected from all our students who ride our school buses daily. Students who fail to follow the school bus rules will be written up with a conduct report. This is automatically sent to the principal, and in some instances, if the behavior is consistent, it could lead to suspension from transportation, sometimes even school. In order for a student to receive transportation, a request is submitted to the Transportation Department. These transportation requests come from multiple district offices, such as early childhood, special services, and the schools. The request is received by our office, and we immediately begin the routing process. Once the student is routed, the guardian of the child will be notified of the transportation arrangements. All schools have access to the transportation database to view their students' routes. Routes are then issued to drivers weekly, so that all drivers have a fresh roster of students on their bus. We transport precious cargo, our wonderful students. We want parents to have a sense of comfort, knowing when they place their children on an Elizabeth Public Schools route, that their child is in good hands. From all of us at the Transportation Department, we want to wish you a safe and successful new school year.
So that concludes my presentation. I would like to thank the people of my department, Transportation, all for coming out here to And if there's any questions?
Yes.
Madam President? I have one question. The video stated that all schools have access to the website in order to track the buses. So where should parents call at five o'clock when their babies aren't home yet? Transportation or their school?
Correction, they have access to the routes, not to our GPS system. So we give all the schools access to our routing software. So what that does, it just gives them an ability to see the students that are on the route. If they're looking for a bus later in the day, they should be calling Transportation, and we track them through our GPS system.
And there's someone in the office--
Yes.
--until all the buses return?
Yeah, we don't leave until we're clear.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Director.
Yes, first, I want to say thank you for our director, Michael Rehm. Thank you, and thank you, the whole department, for your hard work and dedication, the more especially now, the transportation of our students in a safe way. We are very proud of our Transportation Department. I'm very, very proud. Thank you for your hard service and dedication, our secretary, bus driver, and coordinator and director. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. So it's more like a comment, but if there's a family department, it would definitely be the Transportation. You guys are family. And we--
Thank you.[1278.13][1278.13][applause]
And it's such an important thing. You know, we sit here and we want our children to be safe in school, which, that's such an important thing, but we need them to be safe on our buses. And we can say, I can say, as a mother that puts her child on a bus, I feel safe with my children on the bus. Your department shows it, your team members show it, you show it, so I want to congratulate you all. And yeah, great job.
Anyone else? Any questions from our board members? Yes, Board Member Jacobs.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to commend the Transportation Department and all the staff, because that's not an easy job, okay? Let's be honest, okay? It's not an easy job with a bunch of children on the bus, because they're not sitting like that on the video, on the bus. Okay, let's not joke anything. And you know, our department is very professional. You know, we don't have the stories that you hear in other districts of what, God forbid, what happens in those districts, because of the fact that our department is well-run and has great leadership. So I just want to keep it brief and thank you for your service and your dedication to our children and our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[1356.41][1356.41][applause]
Sorry, Madam Superintendent. One more comment. You know why? Because today, I feel the need, we need to highlight things more. So let's start highlighting with this department. And I know you mentioned it, but I would like to highlight the training that they do, the hourless trainings that you do. I know you showed it a little. I know that I sat down with Harold at one time, the training they do for special needs kids. So they're just not sitting there driving. There's a lot that goes into this. So thank you for the training. Thank you for sitting there and learning, and always continuing to learn, because we evolve, and we know that this department is evolving with all the new things that are coming out, with cameras, and again, I can't highlight the training enough. Thank you again. That's it.[1412.58][1412.58][applause]
Madam President, I don't think we can say thank you enough. Thank you for representing us, our city, our children, and being the first line of contact that our students have, because you know, it's about setting the tone for the day, and you guys have done that, and you continue to do that, because you know, we get the reports, you know? We get the reports when things are going bad, but nobody ever celebrates the good that you do, and you do good every single day. And we cannot say thank you enough for the work that you do. I've been to the department, I've toured, I've been on all the buses, and I know you guys have seen us come to see you, and you know, we just are so proud of the organization, the fact that you're so organized and so well-run, and you know, it's a well-oiled machine over there. So we celebrate you tonight, and thank you for that wonderful presentation, Mike, and continue to do the great work that you and your team are doing.
Anyone else? So one more thank you to our director. Thank you for giving us a little bit of an insight of what you do day in, day out. We're not, you know, in your office every day, so we don't understand it, so I do thank you for coming and showing us what it is that you guys deal with. And to your coworkers, just, you know, as Board Member Barbosa says, thank you for being a family, just thank you for being here and supporting us, and mainly for supporting your director. It's not an easy job, it's not an easy department that you run. Come September, it is not easy, and there are little failures, there's little hiccups during the road and everything, but here we are, you know, in June, and it's been a successful year, and thank you for your dedication. Thank you for keeping our kids safe, especially with the bad weathers. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
So, thank you very much.[1530.00][1530.00][laughing]
I would like to take this moment to invite Attorney Sarah Cullinan from the Make the Road New Jersey organization. We welcome you, we welcome our students, our supervisor of guidance, Anthony DiDonato, and we're excited to learn a little bit more about the Student Success Center, which is on our agenda this evening, so it's an opportunity for our board to learn more about this important
So, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Cullinan, I'm the director of Make the Road New Jersey, and I'm joined here by so many of our youth leaders. Several other of them had to go home to make curfew and be up for exams in the morning, but we just, we wanted to express our thanks to Superintendent Hugelmeier, to Board President Concaves, and to all the members of the Board of Education, and to Mr. DiDonato for all his support in making this happen. The Student Success Center is a peer-to-peer-led program that we're going to start in the Elizabeth Public Schools in the upcoming year, and the goal is to increase college application rates, increase college acceptance rates, and to do it by building a college-bound culture that is led by young people. So I'm not going to say a lot more, I'm going to turn it over to some of the youth leaders who are college ambassadors. They've been through a forty-hour training program. We're going to be doing it again this summer, and we invite students to apply from across the district to be part of the program, and they'll learn how to become college ambassadors in their own school. And again, I just want to reiterate my thanks to the board, to all of the administration, and all of the educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for introducing the college ambassadors here. My name is Angie Ruiz. I'm a high school student here in the Elizabeth Public School District, and I'm here with fellow college ambassadors who have gone through what Sarah outlined, the forty-hour training, and also, not only that, but being able to speak with our fellow students one-on-one about the college application process. Even after the college, like, application season has ended, we get more and more questions on how do we help students preparing to enter that college application process, or the emotional support that students might need in order to endure that stress that you get from not only focusing on your studies, as well as doing your applications and writing your essays, and putting yourself out there to people that you might never meet. So that is something that we have been able to, as a, kind of like a family, supported each other through that process, and continue to support our fellow Elizabeth High School students in that process. And I'm sure it's, I mean, you're feeling it enough. Okay, so another college ambassador is going to come up here and share also their experience in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie, for your wonderful comments. I really, truly resonate with her comments. My name is Fiona Joseph. I'm a student here, high school senior at one of your students, one of your schools in the district. I want to share some of my personal experiences as a college ambassador, and what it has taught me as a person and someone who's going to college very soon. I want to thank the entire program for enlightening about this program, because for many young adults here in Elizabeth, young students in Elizabeth, college is-- adults here in Elizabeth, young students in Elizabeth, college is something that's an afterthought, it's something that we don't really worry about until our guidance counselors start bugging us about it until much later. And I think through this program, we really want to encourage a more college-bound society, starting from freshman year of high school. Back then, I had no idea what I was doing, and so many of my peers had no idea what they were doing, just in general. And the fact that many of us are first-generation college students, as we're entering this new, just entering this new stage of where we get to learn more about ourselves, as well as letting others learn about us, I think that the program does a really good job, just as through the training I've received, does a great job in letting me know about how to write efficient essays. And through writing, learning how to write essays, and learning how to communicate, I've learned how to communicate with others, and actually create a peer-to-peer model, constantly, like, even after the college application process, like, Angie was saying that, like, my friends come up to me and asking me about, like, financial aid, and so like, I have, you know, I answer their questions, and I'm constantly learning, and they're constantly learning. And I feel as, the best way to communicate with teenagers is their friends. So I want to thank you guys for supporting this initiative. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Any comments from any of our board members? No? It's on tab five. It's the authorization to accept the contract. Yep. No, we're good.
Thank you all for coming and joining us, and we are excited to join this partnership with you, and just bringing all of your resources and all of your help onto our fellow Elizabeth students. Can't wait. Thank you.
All right, we're good. All right, everyone, let's go through our agenda.
Thanks for hanging out with us, directors. Hi, not the whole meeting is rough. Okay. All right. Tab one, board members, questions, comments, concerns? One A, one B? Okay. Tab two.
Mr. Questa, can you provide a quick summary? Sorry, a brief summary.
Sure, be happy to. So before you for your consideration, there are a couple of, a number of items from HR. We are appointing, or we are recommending the appointment of six individuals, and I'm happy to say that five of them are part of the Special Ed Department, so I commend our department for being proactive and finding outstanding candidates for the autism program that we, that we need to enhance in new classrooms. We are reappointing 70 individuals, just as a reminder to the board members, so those that were hired after February 1st automatically received a letter from us, and they would not be renewed, and we do that to protect the board for budgetary reasons. There are, for your consideration, there are 32 employees that we are reappointing because they have completed their certification requirements, and they are now ready to be reappointed. We still have a number of teachers who are completing the process, and I'm hoping that by the meeting in July, most of them will be recommended for reappointment. We have, it's normal this time of the year that we have retirements, we have $16 retirements. On a personal note, I'd like to say that one of the individuals retiring was, she was a teacher at school three for years, and she was one of the best teachers that I had the pleasure to work with, but she was also my student. So not that I'm getting old, but I think that's just a little bit of trivia that I wanted to highlight, so I'm really proud of the fact that Sylvia is retiring. She was an awesome, awesome teacher, and she has been a great asset to this district for many, many years. We also have several resignations, people who essentially are moving out of state, and that's why they are resigning. And we have a few promotions that I always like to highlight, individuals who have completed additional credits, whether it is a master's degree or 32 beyond the masters, and therefore they get, they get a raise, so they should be commended for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Questa. Any questions on tab two? No. Tab three, tuition's report. Any questions, comments, concerns? Nope. Okay. Tab four, superintendent's report? Any questions? Comments or concerns on tab four A? Tab four B, use of facilities?
Four B, we should take into private to discuss further.
So table, tab four B?
Not table.
I'm sorry, take into private for discussion.
And then, when we come out, we can put it on the agenda.
Tab four BB? Questions, comments? And tab four C? Field trips and the questions? Okay. Tab four D? Oh, that's our-
We'll be presenting that in the second half of our meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Kennedy, can you please put tabs one through tabs four, with the exception of four B, on the agenda? Tab five, authorizations report? Any questions, comments, concerns? Tab five A, Mr. Kennedy, I'm going to ask if we can please refer for discussion in our executive session as well, as four B?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest. Thank you.
Yep.
If I may, before we move on, I wanted to provide our Director of Food Service, Jamie Levitt, an opportunity to provide a brief summary with regard to the-
Lunch prices.
Lunch prices and the calendar. Yes, please.
Yes, it's my recommendation that we maintain current prices for school meals into the 2019, 2020 school year, and the prices are listed on page 14. And the recommendation to adopt the calendars so it coincides with the calendars that the board has already approved.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
How does that affect your budget?
Well, it's no increase in that revenue for paid meals, however, I think we can, there's an increase in the reimbursement that we get from the government, the federal government, and also with the contracts that I have recommended, our costs will probably either be the same or lower.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yep, ready to, okay. Tab six? Oh, no, everybody, everybody asked you to put it in, so, yep, I was a step ahead of you. Tab six, authorization to pay the vouchers. Questions, comments, concerns on tab six? And six A, the supplemental finance report? Seeing none. Tab seven?
Mr. Coto, would you like to provide a very brief summary of the contracts that are included in tab seven?
Yeah, in tab seven, we have a variety of contracts, many of them related to the support, sorry. Most of them, the support of the construction in the summer, which we will be adding 13 classrooms in four schools, asbestos abatement to facilitate the AC installation, the, some of the yearly inspection and maintenance contracts that we have to do in preparation for next year, janitorial supplies, and some damage in school 13 caused by water, which was covered by the insurance, pending maybe some refunds from PSE and G, which, because of their poor, was the reason for the flooding in the lower floor. We have a whole roof repair, and some environmental services that we carry on. Any questions? I'll be glad to ask.
I'd like to ask our Director of Food Service, Jamie Levitt, if she could provide a brief summary of the contracts in tab seven?
I have five recommendations. Can you try? Yep. Sorry. Thank you. I have five recommendations on page four, on 12, and one on 13. One service, he was the lone bidder, the other ones, at least three of them, they were the lowest bidders, but also, they responded to all the items that I requested. Any questions?
Any questions? No. Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to take a moment to highlight the contract with prevention links that's on page nine, and to thank our supervisor who is here this evening, Mr. DiDonato, for coordinating our town hall meeting in order to address the importance of the dangers of using electronic cigarette devices. The town hall meeting is going to take place on June 19th at 6:30. It'll be, the location is Admiral William F. Halsey Health and Public Safety Academy. Special thanks to you for coordinating this important, to present this important information to our parents. I'd also like to ask our Director of Bilingual and ESL, Sandra Nunez, if you could please share a little information regarding the contract with Montclair State University that is listed on page 16.
With the growing number of English-language learners in our district, and the challenges of recruiting bilingual teachers, we're partnering with Montclair State University, where they will be providing onsite courses here in our district for teachers who are interested in taking. So this will definitely help us in terms of recruiting highly-qualified teachers to teach our bilingual students.
Wonderful. Yes, Board Member? Ortega?
I'm excited, I'm excited about that. But my question is in page number eight. Page number eight, contract with Rocket University, the electrical behavior therapy. Will we have that therapy in place this school year, or we already have this therapy?
This, this actual training is going to be made available to our early childhood staff, June 13th and June 14th, in order to make that available moving forward. So the first stage is the training for our staff, and then making that available.
We will stand for the whole district, or we start?
The focus right now is in preschool.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for tab seven?
I have one question. The contract with Israel Delgado, that's someone who's going to come into the district to work with our band?
What page is that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, page 15.
Yes. They'll come in, and so what we do is, when we don't have team members that take on those jobs, we recruit from outside, and so they come in during band camp, towards the end of August, to work with, you know, our director and our students and so forth.
Thank you. So this is because we didn't have a staff member who-
Correct.
Applied. Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tab seven A? Any questions, comments? Tab nine? Summary claims list? Mr. Kennedy, can you please add tabs five through tabs nine onto the agenda, with the exception of five A? I got you, Mr. Kennedy. I got you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Looking through tab nine, I have a question for Mr. Coto. Does our warehouse keep track of, like, an itemized report or a system where we know how many bars of soap are left, how many rolls of toilet paper are left? And if so, how is that done?
Yes, through a school dude, we have an inventory package, which all the items that we buy are registered there, and they are withdrawn as the school required them. So we also use them to determine what are we going to order every year, because it will tell us how much of an item we used, how much we purchased, what we have in inventory, and will help us manage the inventory better. We are in need pretty soon of a really physical inventory, which probably will do it this summer, to try to reconcile that with the inventory package that we have.
Thank you. So it's done by schools, departments, schools, and then our warehouse?
It's done by the warehouse.
Just by the warehouse.
By the warehouse, and we can establish different warehouses. And at one time, we attempted to put each school as a warehouse, but it's too much.
Right.
So we actually do it by warehouse, and then we track the usage on each school, and we feel that the usage is not in, you know, in line with what that school normally uses, then we challenge it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Now we'll go into the resolutions. All right. Any questions on any of tab 10? Can I even do that? 10 through 10M? Or concerns? Mr. Kennedy, any of these for?
10, sorry, 10K.
10Ks for executive?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Kennedy, can you please add tab 10 to the agenda, with an exception of tab 10K?
Who knows?
Before we adjourn our first portion of our meeting, anything else before we go into our executive session? Okay. Everybody's ready to go home? Are you guys ready to go home? We are. We're still staying, though. We still stay behind. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for, you know, spending your evening with us. It's been a long evening, but it was a beautiful one, celebrating a lot of great things, a lot of great highlights, and we thank you all for the amazing school year. As we, you know, start wrapping up the school year, we have a few more days, and thank you all for your hard work and dedication, and we wouldn't be able to do what we do without you all, who are sitting here at the table, who are, you know, instructing our kids and educating them, so a big thank you for all that you do each and every day. Okay? Okay. Can I have a motion to go into private? Oh, wait, I have-
Motion to private?
Sorry, hold off on that. The President requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempted under the Open Public Meeting Act, specifically for discussion of personnel matters, specifically interviews, legally, legal matters, specifically insurance coverage for excess workers' compensation, liability, and property. liability, and property, appointing a managed care organization for workers' compensation, award of contract for U.S. Foods, award of contract asbestos removal, use of school district facilities, lease purchase for the train HVAC, workers' compensation matters specifically JFCPARC. The Board will reconvene in public and may add to the agenda. Can I have a motion in a second? Motion to go into private?
Second.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded, Mr. Kennedy. Roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho. Chevres.
Yes.
Hernan, no, Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Naron. Pastana.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Good night. Resolution appointment of Supervisor of Bilingual ESL, resolution appointment of Vice Principal, resolution appointment of Principal, resolution excess workers' compensation, liability, and property insurance, resolution qualifying and appointing managed care organization, resolution settlement of workers' comp, award of contract, add to report, award of contract asbestos removal, resolution lease purchase, train HVAC, resolution? Oh, train, sorry. Resolution awarding contract to U.S. Foods, supplemental authorization report without use of school bus, resolution acceptance of comprehensive equity plan, needs assessment, and adoption of corrective action plan.
Okay.
Rickuska?
Just got to adjourn this one.
Can I have a motion in a second to adjourn this agenda setting meeting, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion has been properly moved and seconded, Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes.
Pastana.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is a regular business meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on Friday, June seventh, two thousand and nineteen. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of five hundred North Broad Street and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. We want to welcome everyone present here at school number fifty-one and to our television viewers to this June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We also ask that you silence the sound of your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. You may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. We are pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us here for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion may sign up to the start of the meeting so that they have the opportunity to speak. The sign sheet states name, address, telephone number, and reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or general education comments. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Here.
Carvalho.
Still here.
Chevres.
Here.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega. Naron.
Here.
Pastana.
At this time, seeing that there is nobody noted for public participation, the comment portion, I ask that we please have a motion in a second to close that portion of the meeting.
Motion to close public portion.
You got it. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any roll call? Okay. To move right along, we are going to ask for a motion in a second for the resolution of appointment of Supervisor of Bilingual ESL Education K through five for recommended that Ms. Maria Curalina Triana be appointed to Supervisor of Bilingual. Can I have a motion?
Motion to appoint Supervisor of Bilingual ESL Education K through five.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes.
Pastana.
Yes, congratulations. Congratulations. I ask of a motion in a second for the resolution of appointment of Vice Principal. It is recommended that Francesca Ferrera be appointed as Vice Principal for Elmore School Number Twelve on a ten-month basis effective June fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion appoint Francesca Ferrera to Vice Principal, School Number Twelve.
Motion has been properly made and seconded, Mr. Kennedy. Roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega. Naron.
Yes.
Pastana.
Yes. Can I ask for another motion in a second for the resolution of appointment of Principal? It is recommended that Melissa Kulik be appointed as Principal for Elmore School Number Twelve on a twelve-month basis effective June fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second? Motion has been properly moved and seconded, Mr. Kennedy, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes.
Pastana.
Yes. Okay, can I have, at this moment, we're going to, I just have to do P last character. Okay. Looking to pass the agenda from tabs one through tab ten.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to take something out of item that was tabled, item ten X.
Okay.
That was tabled, I'd like to bring it back.
Last month, yes.
Last month. Mr. Kennedy, do I have that item correct, ten X?
Yes, and also on page three of tab seven, the contract with CV Electrical.
Is that the same item?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, board member Naron. Can I have a motion to pass agenda from tab one through tab ten M?
Do we need to vote on the untabling?
Oh, do we need?
Take the table off.
Okay, so we need a motion? Need a motion?
Make a motion to remove item tab ten X and add to the agenda for approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded?
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes.
Pastana.
Now we can vote on the whole agenda, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
From tab?
She'll do it after. Are you want to go first? Okay, so do it first, yeah.
Good evening. This is the HIV presentation for the June's Board of Education meeting, June thirteenth, pursuant to Board Policy fifty-one thirty-one point one, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and New Jersey Statute eighteen A colon thirty-seven. The results of each investigation shall be reported to the Board of Education no later than the date of the next board meeting following completion of the investigation and include any services provided, training established, discipline imposed, or other action taken or recommended by the Chief School Administrator. Since our last Board of Education meeting on May ninth, two thousand and nineteen, and through June eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, our district school counselors and social workers have conducted fifty-eight HIV investigations. Of those investigations, twenty-four were found to meet criteria for HIV as per New Jersey law. There were twenty-five males, forty-one females, fifty-two regular education students, and fourteen special education students that were alleged victims. There were sixty males, forty-one females, eighty regular education students, and twenty-one special education students that were alleged perpetrators. Of the services provided and actions taken for the fifty-eight cases, there were twenty-four skill development lessons and interventions, fifty-two counseling sessions, three behavioral interventions, ten referrals for outpatient treatment, eight changes of class or school, eleven in-school detentions, twenty-six out-of-school suspensions, five administrative counseling sessions, forty-one parent conferences, three referrals to outside agencies, and nine cases that are continuing to be monitored. Of the twenty-four cases founded for HIV, three were based on race, national origin; one was based on characteristic of color; two were based on sexual orientation; four were founded on the basis of gender; two were founded on the basis of gender identity and expression; two were based on a mental, physical, or sensory disability; and eighteen cases were founded based on other identifying characteristics. The HIV statute further requires that our next regularly scheduled meeting after the Board members receive the report of HIV investigations, that the Board issue a decision in writing to affirm, reject, or modify the superintendent's decision pertaining to the fifty-six cases that were reported to you at the last board meeting on May ninth, two thousand and nineteen. In order for you to do so, the packet of investigation summaries from those investigations which were reported to you at the last board meeting have been provided for your review prior to voting.
Any questions? No questions? No. Thank you. No questions. Great, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Can I have a motion to pass the agenda from tabs one through tab ten X along with the added resolutions that were added onto the agenda this evening?
Madam President, I have a comment.
Yes.
Resolution ten D. I just think that it's important that we're all aware of the fact that this resolution's in the agenda for Gun Violence Awareness Month, the month of June, in light of everything that's happened in the United States in the last few years. It's important that we make sure that Gun Violence Awareness Month is properly executed, that this resolution is properly executed to all of our schools and that our staff take the time to properly prepare our students in case that something happens.
Thank you, Board Member Carvalho. Anything else? Can I have a motion in a second? For tabs one through ten X with the added resolutions?
Motion to pass the agenda in its entirety.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Barbosa.
Yes, with the exception of tab seven, page nine.
Carvalho.
Yes, with the exception of tab five, page eleven, tab two, page forty-six, tab two, page twenty-two.
Chevres.
Yes, with exception in tab seven, page nine, tab four A, number eight, and number five.
Jacobs.
Mr. Kennedy, sorry.
Four B.
Four B, number five.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes, with the exception of tab four, number one, two, three, tab five, page one, four, tab two A, page seventy-five, seventy-six, tab four A, number two, and tab seven, page nine.
And Pastana.
Yes, with an extension of tab five, page eleven.
Just one more item. We have a first reading of a policy, five.
Mr. Kennedy, we're actually going to move that to the July meeting as per request of the Board.
Okay.
Yes.
Then we're done.
Okay. Okay. And I'm just going to adjourn my part with the President's focus. At this time, I would like to share the President's focus before ending our meeting. I have designated office hours from five thirty to seven PM every Monday night during which family, Elizabeth families may make an appointment to meet with me and discuss any issues or concerns pertaining to the Elizabeth Public Schools. As we near the end of the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and draw closer to our promotion and graduation ceremonies, I would like to thank our students and teachers for their dedication to achieving excellence. It has been a privilege to meet many of you, to witness the inspiring work you are all doing in your schools, and to recognize and celebrate your outstanding achievements throughout the course of the year, including here at our board meetings. I especially want to congratulate our soon-to-be class of two thousand and nineteen graduates for their milestone achievement, including some who may be the first in their families to graduate high school or to attend college this fall. I look forward to seeing you all at the commencement next week and having the opportunity to personally congratulate you onstage when you come up to receive your diplomas. I know I speak for my colleagues here on the Board in saying that we are excited for your future and for your positive impact you will make on the Elizabeth community and beyond. The education you have received from Elizabeth Public Schools has prepared you for all the opportunities in front of you. We look forward to hearing about you and celebrating your successes in the years ahead. Finally, I would like to thank the members of the Elizabeth Public Schools learning community for your support throughout this year. Have a fun and safe summer. I look forward to getting to know more of you and celebrating more of your success during the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. Thank you. Anything else from any of our board members? For return? Yes, board member Ortega.
First, I want to say Happy Father's Day this coming Sunday to if one of you who celebrate Father's Day. I know it's not easy, be here, do whatever, a lot you doing, and at the same time, I hope you enjoy this wonderful weekend. And the other things I want to say, congratulations to our senior. I will not be able to attend graduation. I will not be able to attend graduation. I want to inform to the community, I was selected to study five weeks in Spain. I leave in this coming, July 23rd. And for my Colombian community, I'm happy to say today, the Board of Education passed a resolution about Colombian Independence Day. The Liza Board of Education recognized Colombian Independence Day in honor of the contribution of Colombian in the Liza Public School community and below. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, I would just like to ask, uh, the Board and the superintendent and her staff if we can, uh, have a serious conversation about the, um, legislation that's trying to be passed. Um, the guidance counselor from Hamilton was here today to speak about it, and he gave all of the board members, uh, I asked that all the board members look at this and, um, that you put some serious thought into it. Mental health is a serious issue, and, uh, it, I think that it's part of one of the reasons why we were elected to make sure that all of our children receive the services that they deserve and need to get. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just want to say thank you, um, Commissioner Marina, for the well wishes on Father's Day, and to all our fathers out there, Happy Father's Day to you. Um, and thank you for all the great work that you do each and every day, being a great role model, whether you're, you have children or not, but being a great role model to young people out there. We appreciate you and we salute you.
Madam President?
Yes, Madam Vice President.
Madam President?
Yes, Board Member Jacobs.
Uh, I'd also like to echo the Happy Father's Day sentiments to everyone. Special day for us fathers, we need to take advantage of it because it's always the Happy Mother's Day, and those fathers always get left behind. Especially in the minority, especially in this female majority Board, can't, you know,
It's all about you guys on Sunday.
Over here.
We got it, we got it.
But more importantly, more importantly, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that this June marks the 400th anniversary of Juneteenth, no, excuse me, I'm sorry, 400th anniversary of the slave trade. Um, and this upcoming Juneteenth celebration is an important, uh, event for African-Americans particularly, um, for the struggles that we've been through and the struggles that we continue to face today, and the fact that we always will continue to fight and champion on. And it's something for all of us to remember in our different cultures and the different places that we come from, um, that we are still all the same as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. And I also want to echo, um, the Juneteenth celebration because this year, on Juneteenth, June 19th, we asked that everybody join and band together as we do the first ever Juneteenth flag raising at the county courthouse, which is going to be a historic event, so looking forward to seeing everybody there at 5:00 P.M. at the Union County Courthouse.
Thank you for the information.
The 19th Wednesday.
Being that, uh, the school year is coming to an end, I want to congratulate all the graduating, uh, students and even every, every student that is progressing to the following year. Uh, have a great summer. With that said, I know we saw a very fabulous movie this morning where our superintendent spoke. I, I'd like to thank her and your, your cabinet for for having a nice school year, you know, and for, um, getting us through. Um, I also like to remind, uh, the community with our first initiative with our town hall, um, coming up on June 19th, uh, please come out. We, as board members, support it, we put this all together, so it's important that, you know, it's, um, it's unvaping, so that's important to mention for you to come out. And, um, thank you to all my, um, board members, colleagues, everyone at home. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Mr. Kennedy, last time for the night.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neron. Pastana.
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.